Good evening. Hope you all are doing well. We're gonna start with the, I call this meeting to order and we're gonna start with the...
Fudge allegiance, please stand.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rice, roll call.
Dr. Bellamy?
Here.
Ms. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Signer?
Here.
Ms. Galvin?
Here.
All right, and next we have the city manager's response to community matters. And the August 11th through 12th report.
Thank you, Mayor Walker, members of council. Tonight, I'm gonna give you a brief update on the events of the weekend of August 10th and 12th. Chief Brackney is here and either of us or Mr. Wheeler can answer questions from the council at the end of the presentation. I'll start by sharing some feedback that we've received from the community, provide my thoughts on the events, and then close with where we're headed from here as a city organization. So, what we've heard, including at the Tuesday event that council held, a community meeting at the Heritage Center. There were thank yous for a safe weekend, particularly to clergy members and local activists, some to law enforcement, to counselors and community members who worked to de-escalate. There was a lot of discussion about communication, questions about whether officers could communicate when they're in a line or flanking a crowd, even if it's intended for their protection. Pedestrian restrictions were announced too close to the weekend. Questions were raised about bag screening policies that were not clearly articulated at community meetings. There was a lot of discussion about the scale of our response, whether there were too many officers, questions about what the level of threat was for the weekend, the basis for emergency declaration, the cost of the response, whether our response was an overcompensation for the failures of the previous year. Pedestrian restrictions were felt to be unwarranted by some. We're looking for a middle ground of security in the future. City services such as parks and recreation did not need to be altered. Law enforcement preparation and tactics were questioned, particularly, we fielded a number of questions about helicopters, whether the restrictions were in place for locals and Antifa, questions about whether we had ICE involvement in the area. Some folks felt that property was valued over people, and there was a lot of discussion about whether officer de-escalation training was needed and how it could be funded. There were a number of suggestions from the community on repair, suggesting that apologies are still needed from last year, and certain demands were made of both the city and UVA for either compensation or reparations. There were folks who talked about making changes for the future, needing to listen to one another, needing to start working together, and acting now to make lives better. In my opinion, we're fortunate that our community conversation can focus on these matters rather than a failure to protect people from injuries and death. Our primary objective of a safe weekend was met. Safety of people was always prioritized over property. Our collaboration and communication over many months allowed us to work well with our partners throughout the weekend. We worked from a single incident action plan and improved our messaging to the public. There were few arrests, officers interacted well with people and did not escalate difficult situations. We can continue to learn and grow from our experience in 2018. Our communication will continue improving, will continue to build relationships. We can begin a community conversation about a partnership in planning the events for the anniversary weekend in 2019. So what comes next? We've begun to debrief internally. The planning partners will have our first debrief next week. A plan for an after-action report will be created, and we'll share a summary with council and the public when it's completed. As an organization, the city of Charlottesville will be working to address not just how we prepare for a few days in August each year, but how do we change our behavior as an organization and as a community to address the underlying issues of inequities? Behavior change is difficult. Most people or groups only change in response to a crisis or due to discomfort or because a considerable sustained focus is in place. If this is a great community but not for everybody, we must be focused and we must do better. I've been asked what it means to create an equity focus for the city. Here are the things that our organization will focus on and commit to. That our role as public servants is to be solution-oriented and customer-focused and provide the best possible service to all of our citizens. That we will become a community where black and brown babies are just as likely to be born safe and healthy. That we ensure that all children are equally likely to be ready for school. That school is a place where all students can be successful. That we must improve economic mobility and opportunity. That the systems that are meant to keep children safe do so in a culturally responsive way that keeps families together when possible. That our justice systems are fair and equitable regardless of the color of your skin or the country you were born in. That people can enjoy many modes of safe, accessible transportation. That all people can enjoy clean air, clean water, green spaces, and a healthy environment. That we find ways to house those that need it. That we work together to create a safe and affordable housing structure. And that people are able to access medical and behavioral health services. As council is aware, I've begun to reach out to members of the community about an equity focus for the organization that is comprised of citizens. I look forward to working with our staff and the community to realize this vision. And take your questions.
Thank you. You're taking questions from?
From the council, Chief Brackney and I, Mr. Wheeler if you have any.
We answered a lot of questions last week, can you answer them?
So the questions that came up at the listening session, when do you all plan to address any of those?
Well, our first discussions are happening inside just the city right now. We start to talk with the partners beginning next week. And unlike last year where, you know, the city had an after-action report and the state had after-action reports, it's my hope that part of the outcome next week is that we'll agree that there will be one after-action for all the partners involved. So, outside of having that meeting next week, I can't give you the timeline yet, but as you're aware, last year, it did take a couple months, and based on the work of over a thousand people to work this operation, I would say that it will take that again.
So would it be, would it be safe to say that we could expect an answer in regards to after-action report if it's August now, October, or November?
It's difficult for me to answer that because I don't know who's gonna be identified to do the after-action, right? You know, we chose different folks and the state did. I would hope that that's a two to three-month process, I can't promise that tonight.
Just something, no, I understand, something to, so the public knows that we're listening when they can expect some kind of response or whatnot, but two to three months I think seems fair. And I think it's also for the public, for those who weren't at the listening session last Tuesday, to continue to be able to send their questions in, whether it's email or when they come up and take their three minutes. I think it's fair for them to be able to ask whatever questions that they have, that's part of the reason why we have an extra two minutes in terms of us responding, and we can try to answer the best way we can to what we can answer.
Yeah, I think that part of the purpose of the listening session is for us to capture some of that feedback so we can convey to partners the sorts of questions that we hope can be addressed in the after-action. Mr. Wheeler, can you say, we still have a phone line active if people would like to leave a phone message with questions? Can you say the number?
Brian Wheeler, Director of Communications, the number's 434-970-3109. And we received about 20 phone calls, most of them before the event, and just two or three afterwards.
Can you say it one more time, Mr. Wheeler?
434-970-3109.
One more question while you hear Mr. Wheeler. So for those who asked a question, because I'm assuming rather that people will hear this number now and say, hey, I have questions or things that I want to say, is there a process in which, excuse me, city staff will be responding to those questions, or will, the last thing we want is for people to ask questions and they just go into a vacuum and no one hears back?
Yep, so I'm listening to all those messages. I've called back a few people who asked to be followed up with, and then I've written up a summary of all the calls and shared it with Mr. Murphy.
So when, so just for clarification, when people call in, ask their questions, or make their complaints or whatnot, is best practice for them to request a call back or request feedback and then you get back to them?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, Mr. Murphy, I have a question then. So when the public asks us counselors questions, should we give them to you so that you have a composite set of questions?
Sure, you're welcome to do that.
And there was a comment in the front when you stated what 2019 would look like, about whether, so is there any way you could speak to what your hope is from the statement you made about next year?
And related to that, you also at one point had mentioned working with the community and the vision for what we do with these spaces, specifically those parks.
Yeah. I think that before we get within six months of the event again...
My thoughts on the events and then close with where we're headed from here as a city organization. So, what we've heard, including at the Tuesday event that council held as a community meeting at the Heritage Center. There were thank yous for a safe weekend, particularly to clergy members and local activists, some to law enforcement, to counselors and community members who worked to de-escalate. There was a lot of discussion about communication, questions about whether officers could communicate when they're in a line or flanking a crowd, even if it's intended for their protection. Pedestrian restrictions were announced too close to the weekend. Questions were raised about bag screening policies that were not clearly articulated at community meetings. There was a lot of discussion about the scale of our response, whether there were too many officers, questions about what the level of threat was for the weekend, the basis for emergency declaration, the cost of the response, whether our response was an overcompensation for the failures of the previous year. Pedestrian restrictions were felt to be unwarranted by some. We're looking for a middle ground of security in the future. City services such as parks and recreation did not need to be altered. Law enforcement preparation and tactics were questioned, particularly, we fielded a number of questions about helicopters, whether the restrictions were in place for locals and Antifa, questions about whether we had ICE involvement in the area. Some folks felt that property was valued over people, and there was a lot of discussion about whether officer de-escalation training was needed and how it could be funded. There were a number of suggestions from the community on repair, suggesting that apologies are still needed from last year, and certain demands were made of both the city and UVA for either compensation or reparations. There were folks who talked about making changes for the future, needing to listen to one another, needing to start working together, and acting now to make lives better. In my opinion, we're fortunate that our community conversation can focus on these matters rather than a failure to protect people from injuries and death. Our primary objective of a safe weekend was met. Safety of people was always prioritized over property. Our collaboration and communication over many months allowed us to work well with our partners throughout the weekend. We worked from a single incident action plan and improved our messaging to the public. There were few arrests, officers interacted well with people and did not escalate difficult situations. We can continue to learn and grow from our experience in 2018. Our communication will continue improving and will continue to build relationships. We can begin a community conversation about a partnership in planning the events for the anniversary weekend in 2019. So what comes next? We've begun to debrief internally. The planning partners will have our first debrief next week. A plan for an after-action report will be created, and we'll share a summary with council and the public when it's completed. As an organization, the city of Charlottesville will be working to address not just how we prepare for a few days in August each year, but how do we change our behavior as an organization and as a community to address the underlying issues of inequities? Behavior change is difficult. Most people or groups only change in response to a crisis or due to discomfort or because a considerable sustained focus is in place. If this is a great community but not for everybody, we must be focused and we must do better. I've been asked what it means to create an equity focus for the city. Here are the things that our organization will focus on and commit to. That our role as public servants is to be solution-oriented and customer-focused and provide the best possible service to all of our citizens. That we will become a community where black and brown babies are just as likely to be born safe and healthy. That we ensure that all children are equally likely to be ready for school. That school is a place where all students can be successful. That we must improve economic mobility and opportunity. That the systems that are meant to keep children safe do so in a culturally responsive way that keeps families together when possible. That our justice systems are fair and equitable regardless of the color of your skin or the country you were born in. That people can enjoy many modes of safe, accessible transportation. That all people can enjoy clean air, clean water, green spaces, and a healthy environment. That we find ways to house those that need it. That we work together to create a safe and affordable housing structure. And that people are able to access medical and behavioral health services. As council is aware, I've begun to reach out to members of the community about an equity focus for the organization that is comprised of citizens. I look forward to working with our staff and the community to realize this vision. And take your questions.
Thank you. You're taking questions from?
From the council, Chief Brackner and I, Mr. Wheeler, if you have any.
Yeah, so a lot of questions last week. You can answer them.
So the questions that came up at the listening session, when do you all plan to address any of those?
Well, our first discussions are happening inside just the city right now. We start to talk with the partners beginning next week. And unlike last year, where, you know, the city had an after-action report and the state had after-action reports, it's my hope that part of the outcome next week is that we'll agree that there will be one after-action for all the partners involved. So, outside of having that meeting next week, I can't give you the timeline yet, but as you're aware, last year, it did take a couple months, and based on the work of over a thousand people to work this operation, I would say that it will take that again.
So would it be, would it be safe to say that we could expect an answer in regards to after-action report if it's August now, October, or November?
It's difficult for me to answer that because I don't know who's going to be identified to do the after-action, right? You know, we chose different folks and the state did. I would hope that that's a two to three-month process. I can't promise that tonight.
Just something, no, I understand, something to, so the public knows that we're listening when they can expect some kind of response or whatnot, but two to three months, I think, seems fair. And I think it's also for the public, for those who weren't at the listening session last Tuesday, to continue to be able to send their questions in, whether it's email or when they come up and take their three minutes. I think it's fair for them to be able to ask whatever questions that they have. That's part of the reason why we have an extra two minutes in terms of us responding, and we can try to answer the best way we can to what we can answer.
Yeah, I think that part of the purpose of the listening session is for us to capture some of that feedback so we can convey to partners the sorts of questions that we hope can be addressed in the after-action. Mr. Wheeler, can you say, we still have a phone line active if people would like to leave a phone message with questions? Can you say the number?
Yeah. Brian Wheeler, Director of Communications. The number's four three four nine seven zero three one zero nine. And we received about twenty phone calls, most of them before the event, and just two or three afterwards.
Can you say it one more time, Mr. Wheeler?
Four three four nine seven zero three one zero nine.
One more question while you hear Mr. Wheeler. So for those who asked a question, because I'm assuming rather that people will hear this number now and say, hey, I have questions or things that I want to say, is there a process in which, excuse me, city staff will be responding to those questions, or will, the last thing we want is for people to ask questions and they just go into a vacuum and no one hears back?
Yep, so I'm listening to all those messages. I've called back a few people who asked to be followed up with, and then I've written up a summary of all the calls and shared it with Mr. Murphy.
So when, so just for clarification, when people call in, ask their questions, or make their complaints or whatnot, is best practice for them to request a call back or request feedback and then you give back to them?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
So, Mr. Murphy, I have a question then. So when the public asks us counselors questions, should we give them to you so that you have a composite set of questions?
Sure, you're welcome to do that.
Okay.
And there was a comment in the front when you stated what 2019 would look like, about whether, so is there any way you could speak to what your hope is from the statement you made about next year?
And related to that, you also at one point had mentioned working with the community and the vision for what we do with these spaces, specifically those parks.
So that's what I was.
Yeah. I think that before we get within six months of the event again, which is when people might logically, pardon me?
It's not an event, it's not, you don't let it be someone.
Yeah. I think that we want to talk with people in the community about how they would like public spaces to be used, and to hear from folks what would they'd like to see happen during next year. I think that it's not realistic that this one-year anniversary of 2017 is the only time that this community will remember the events, nor is it the only time that we are at risk. And I think that we need to acknowledge that, but then work as a community to look for ways for future August to be positive.
So, I'm sorry.
Mr. Murphy, though, related to that, in November of 2017, the council adopted a resolution for a process to begin the discussion about the redesign of our downtown parks. That has given rise to an RFP, a Request for Proposal, and as my understanding, we have four proposals in from teams to begin that process. However, I recall being advised to put that on hold until we get more clarity on the court's decisions. Am I right on that?
Yeah, I don't want to get too far out in front with my answer on that, but I would say that it's entirely likely that we won't be able to go forward with the RFPs that were submitted, because so much time will have passed before the council gets any clarification of what your legal standing is on the statute cases. And when somebody says that they want to bid on a service for the city, there's a limited window where they have to honor the pricing. And since, I don't believe that there is, in 2018 even, a return to court, if I'm remembering correctly, it's January, right? So, a ruling from Judge Moore or, you know, is unlikely until January, February. Since we've had those RFPs in for some time now, I can't imagine anybody honors that pricing, and that we would probably need to put it out to bid again.
But the process is in place.
Sure.
It needs to just be activated again, and I guess at this point in time, it should only be activated once we have a decision from the courts at this point.
Yeah, I mean, if you know what the outcome in court is, then council may want to revisit what the RFP says, because you'll know that the, you know, perhaps the statute is or is not there, but no matter what the outcome is in court, there's the likelihood of some sort of appeal, so.
Right, no matter what, it's going to get appealed. I mean, the statute situation is a long-term thing.
We've got to do something, though, to put some context in there, a plaque, something that explains what these statutes are in the meantime. And so, but that's what I wanted to get clarification on, there's absolutely nothing we can do.
The court has said you can't touch the park.
With regard to the downtown park and doing a redesign, no.
I think the public needed to hear that.
All right. All right, just before we move on to the community matters, I would like to welcome our new city attorney, Mr. John Blair. So, welcome, and thanks for, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome, Mr. Blair.
Thank you, sir.
Is that Blair, or is he being allocated?
Resolution.
Resolution. Okay, yeah, so, yeah. So we'll have boards and commission, and Counselor Galvin will read a resolution.
It's two resolutions.
Two resolutions.
Okay, so, so Mayor Walker, should I read the proclamation first, or should we do the boards first? Because it doesn't, doesn't it? Okay. I'll, it's a proclamation, a resolution in support of ratification by Virginia of the Equal Rights Amendment to the United States Constitution. Whereas the United States Constitution does not explicitly guarantee equal rights and equal protection for the sexes, and whereas the Fourteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution and state constitutional statements of equality generally do not provide the strict scrutiny for sex-based classifications, that is provided for classifications based on race, religion, and national origin, and whereas state laws are not uniform and federal laws are not comprehensive, and these laws can be repealed or reduced, and whereas the people of the United States continue to experience the negative effects of lack of political parity between men and women, workplace discrimination, healthcare inequities, disparate rates of poverty, rape, and domestic violence assaults, whereas the Equal Rights Amendment, ERA, provides that equality of rights under the law shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex, and whereas the amendment would help ensure women and men have the same constitutional protections, and whereas the ERA was passed by Congress in 1972 and has been ratified by thirty-seven states, the most recent being Nevada in 2017 and Illinois in 2018, and whereas the time limit for the ERA appears only in the preamble, and whereas the Congress presently is considering a bill that removes the time limit for ratification of the ERA, and whereas for forty-seven years, the Virginia State Constitution has sought to protect Virginians from discrimination by the Commonwealth on the basis of sex, and whereas the city of Charlottesville endorses principles of fair treatment in accordance with the Charlottesville Human Rights Ordinance, Article fifteen of the city code, which prohibits gender discrimination, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of Charlottesville supports the ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment, be it further resolved that the city council of Charlottesville urges the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Virginia to ratify the ERA to the U.S. Constitution as proposed by Congress on March twenty-second, nineteen seventy-two, during the 2019 legislative session. Sign and seal this twentieth day of August, 2018. Nakia Walker, Mayor of Charlottesville. So, Ms. Kavi Hoffman is here, I believe, and others are here to accept it?
Great, thank you so much, the city council, for this resolution. There are many ways in which our community can work towards equality.
Can you introduce yourself?
I will introduce myself now. My name is Alisa Heffner, I'm with the Charlottesville's National Organization for Women, and I just wanted to say thank you. This is a very important step towards the ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment. As Counselor Galvin said, we are only one state away from ratifying this amendment, which would mean equality, gender equality would be guaranteed in the U.S. Constitution. And we experience gender inequality in a lot of ways, whether it's in pay equity gap, pregnancy discrimination, and this is a really important measure, and sending this measure, sending this message to the General Assembly lets them know how important this work is for ratifying the Equal Rights Amendment. And we, the state is kicking off a statewide effort for ratification that starts this Sunday on Women's Equality Day, and we hope to see you, folks, if they're available, to come on Sunday to the Violent Crown for a free screening of our Angels. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a resolution that I would like to read and present to the members of Pride, celebrating our, excuse me, this is our 2018 resolution officially celebrating Pride and declaring Pride Week. So whereas the city of Charlottesville is a community that values human rights and respects the dignity of each person, and whereas the council of the city of Charlottesville is committed to equal rights for all Americans and opposes discrimination in all forms, whereas on May twentieth, 2013, the city of Charlottesville established a Human Rights Commission along with an anti-discrimination ordinance that prohibits discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity, and whereas the cultural diversity and heritage of the city of Charlottesville has been enriched by the contributions of its lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning LGBTQ community, and whereas the city's LGBTQ community members are integrally and actively involved with our city's health and safety, learning and innovation, economic energy, and quality of life, and the Pride Fest celebrates the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning community and its proud presence in the city of Charlottesville, therefore be it resolved that the city council recognizes with pride the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning community in Charlottesville, and be it further resolved that the council proclaims the week of Saturday, September eighth through Sunday, September sixteenth, 2018, as Pride Festival Week in the city of Charlottesville. Also, please make note that the Pride Fest will be Saturday, September fifteenth, so make sure you mark your calendars. Let's give a round of applause for the Pride representatives who will come up and accept this round of, excuse me, this resolution, please. We'll be joined, we'll be joined by Ms. Amy Sarah Marshall, who we'd like to say a few words. We're going to have the resolution brought to you.
Thank you so much. I will just be very brief in my gratitude and say that one of the things that I have learned by doing the Pride Festival is that it is not just an event for people in the LGBTQ, I'm not going to list the whole thing again, but people have learned, I'm sure, from hearing that. It's not just for that community, it's for all of us, it's for all the allies who show up, it's for all of the parents, it's for all the kids, it's for all of the cousins, it's that extended family, and it's for people to show up and celebrate people being who they are and being true to who they are, no matter what, no matter what they face, what challenges they face, and it's truly, it makes my heart just swell to know that the city is continuing to embrace this as its own, and that this isn't about an organization, this is about our city and our town and our region making this commitment, and so I applaud that you guys are doing this, and I thank you for that support, and hope to see y'all there.
Indeed, much love, see you on the fifteenth.
Thank you.
Bless you.
And as I see many of you in the audience whose names are on a broader list, we did not get through all of our appointments for boards and commissions, but are certainly committed to taking advantage either before or following an upcoming work session to finalize those appointments, but one of them was especially time-sensitive, so this evening, council appointed the following to the Charlottesville Albemarle Convention and Visitors Bureau, Jennifer Mayo, and then representing the city council, Ms. Kathy Galvin. I believe we have to vote on that.
You have to vote.
So I make that motion?
Second.
All right, and vote, please. All right, it carries five to zero. All right, and now we'll get started with community matters. First up is Michael Payne.
Hello, Michael Payne, just wanted to briefly bring attention to council and the community, something that understandably council and staff has probably not been a priority, but that is the pilot participatory budgeting program. I think especially over the past few weeks, as the topic of community engagement has continued to come up, and we've struggled with how do we develop a robust process for community engagement to do things like selecting city manager and all kinds of other things, that participatory budgeting could be a huge tool for us as a community, and I think we need to just maintain a focus on that and make sure we do it the right way and that we're fully committed to it, because I think if it is done intentionally and it's done right, I think it could have a huge positive effect in terms of taking decisions that only happen in private and having the community be involved in this decision-making, which I think can change decision outcomes and can also help educate the community about some of the trade-offs and decisions that council and staff have to make that may be, we're just not a part of. And again, it's something that's been done in a few cities around the country, it's something that Cooperation Jackson has done in Jackson, Mississippi, it's a part of the Movement for Black Lives Policy platform, and I know, you know, it's, hasn't maintained a lot of attention, but council, through Counselor Bellamy and Counselor Signer as well, helped get this passed, and there is that money there for it, and we just, I think we need to pay attention to it and make sure that it's implemented, because if it's done the wrong way and if we're not intentional about it, I think it will just be a huge missed opportunity when we have this tool in front of us that can, because it's not, I think the power of it is that it's a process that can move beyond the budget, where you can involve the entire community in a decision by doing community events, canvassing, and once that process is in place, it can be applied not just to the budget, but to selecting city staff, to development, to all kinds of different decisions, and I think that can be a big part of transforming how we operate as a city. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So last, I met with assistant city manager last week, and so this is a conversation that has been ongoing in the city manager's office. Leslie is proposing that she has, will get us something within, I think, what did she say? A couple, you, you haven't talked to her. So, I think, I want to say I remember a two-week, a month timeframe, so this conversation has been ongoing, and I think we met last Friday, we did receive a budget proposal that was over the amount that was budgeted for the process and included administrative fees that some of us don't agree with at this time, so we are trying to work through that, but I think everybody is committed to making sure that the budget process overall and this leans more towards a participatory budgeting aspect and where there's more involvement from the community. So it's still on the radar.
Understood. If I could just add one thing, and I apologize for not sending this to the rest of council. I know Ms. Pogard sent us an email saying that she would like for the city to undertake it, but I do think it's important that if we could, in some regard, still have some kind of input from either Mr. Payne or Mr. Slats, because they were very instrumental in pushing this and bringing this to us. I mean, I know a couple of us had already talked about participatory budgeting, but they were really driving forces behind it, so is there any way that they could be involved in the implementation and/or, I don't know if we would say decision-making process, but I do think that their input is valuable.
What, did you submit the budget that we received?
I did not, no.
Okay.
Mr. Slats did, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, so I think what is the, the cost of the budget from the, what I remember of the conversation is where we're at.
Right.
Where we want the money that was allocated for the community to be able to vote on that amount, one hundred percent of it, to go towards a community goal, which is not currently what is happening, so that is what we're looking at.
Cool. Oh, sorry.
I think the mayor's hit it on the head here at the end, that, you know, we don't want to spend nearly as much on facilitating a process as we do for the community getting product of their work, right? And so, whatever we can do to make sure as much of the money goes into either services or projects, rather than paying somebody to navigate the process, is what we're invested in.
And, sorry, quick question, your vision, would you ideally see city staff facilitating the process or the community facilitating the process? Because that's obviously, especially as a new process, the major part of it is facilitation.
I think that we all have to have that conversation, because we just received the budget, and I don't even know if everyone has had the conversation about, about it.
No, we haven't, we just got it.
And if Mayor Walker may say something, that I was at a community meeting this past week, and one of the neighborhood leaders in the Fifeville neighborhood asked about, well, whatever happened to the neighborhood grants? Can we still get those? And that might have been before everyone's time, but there was a time where a chunk of money was given to the neighborhood associations, and then they were the structure that decided what to do with that money. And I, I do want us to really seriously work hard towards having this decision-making being in the hands of the community. I think that's, that's, this participatory budgeting process is pointing in the direction that we used to be in. It was strictly about physical issues, physical street improvements and whatnot, but I just wanted to get that out there, that that's where my heart is leaning and my thoughts are leaning, that we really, this is an opportunity to let the community decide what they want to do with this, this amount of money.
Yeah, but I think we're going to have to extend, you know, go beyond the neighborhood associations, because we are going to have to reach members who are not affiliated with the association, so we're going to have to make sure that...
But I don't want to go be, I don't want to go the other way, where it's only staff?
No, not at all, I don't think anyone is, or at least I'm not committed, yeah, to that, yeah, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Thank you, Mr. Payne.
All right, Jean Hyatt.
Good evening, Mayor Walker and councilors.
Good evening.
I'm Jean Hyatt, I live on Rugby Avenue, I'm here representing Preservation Piedmont, a local preservation organization. We ask to deny the current zone text amendment allowing drive-through restaurants in three very different highway corridor zoning districts. Instead, we request that you create a separate Highway twenty-nine zoning district that would include a portion of hydraulic road, and would perhaps use, allow SUPs for drive-throughs restaurants in special circumstances in that area. Please do not change the existing language for the highway corridor zoning districts. The city has three separate highway corridor zoning districts that look very different. The Fifth Street Corridor has the potential of being significantly affected by the proposed zoning amendment in a very negative way. The Monticello Avenue Highway Corridor zoning district, including the Monticello Avenue entrance corridor, as well as adjacent streets such as Linden Avenue and Mountain View Street, please note that the Monticello Avenue entrance corridor guides development for only a small avenue area, leaving the rest of the zoning district exposed to intense development without the mitigating tools in place to guide building projects. Such uncontrolled development is likely to cause congestion and diminish residential life. It will not promote affordable housing or protect the environment, and it will have an adverse effect in close-up, close-by neighborhoods such as Belmont. Monticello Avenue provides an essential connection between our city and historic sites, is a primary entrance for downtown Charlottesville, downtown Belmont, PVCC, Monticello Highland, Morven, and a number of vineyards. It is adjacent to the Saunders-Monticello Trail and other outdoor recreation sites that have become important health and fitness amenities for many local residents. Drive-through restaurants in this entrance corridor could make the goals of future increased pedestrian and bicycle connectivity even more challenging by encouraging car-oriented development there. Please do not incentivize sprawl in our city. It is our hope that this and other areas of Charlottesville continue to develop in ways that support human health, diversity of access, and also sensible connections between area tourist attractions and local businesses. Charlottesville citizens have clearly voiced their concern that existing zoning is negatively affecting and sometimes destroying the very place that makes the city livable, beautiful, and unique. Please deny this current zoning text amendment and send it back to NDS to be rewritten to create a distinct category for the Kmart area called Highway twenty-nine. Thank you.
Alex McGee.
I just really quickly wanted to respond, appreciate those comments, and it wasn't until today that I feel like it was raised, I wasn't aware that we could kind of designate, I think you'll have to save this for our conversation later, because for me personally, it really is focused on this one pretty narrow area of twenty-nine, which I feel like has already precedented with a lot of this type of drive-through, and certainly I have no interest in having anything come along, either the Fifth Street Corridor or the Monticello Corridor, so I look forward to the conversation, understanding what our options are, because that certainly has been the focus for me, is meeting the needs of this area that certainly has precedence for that type of activity versus what, you know, our southern entrance corridors, which look very different, so I appreciate you and Ms. Keller raising both of that today.
I'm not commencing, the planning commission denied, voted to deny this request.
Mayor Walker, may I just say one thing about this issue? In the event that the people leave, because it is close to the end of the night when we're gonna talk about this, and I can understand if you can't hang in there till midnight, the irony of, of this, however, is that the one, the one area that has the highway commercial designation, that has a small area plan, a blueprint for the future, with, with an orientation towards how to rezone, is the, is this hydraulic Hillsdale area. The other two highway commercial zone districts don't have a small area plan, so on that score, we would be completely ignoring a public process and a public outcome that this, this council and planning commission voted for, and diverting staff resources to do a rezoning that is not the rezoning that was called for in that community small area plan. I think that is a really, kind of, it's undermining our own process. So I appreciate the statement, but I, I actually don't see it quite the solution that maybe
Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Alex McGee, I live in Belmont, I appreciate all of you elected officials and paid staff and what you do. The things that I would like to ask you to take into consideration in whatever decisions you're making tonight and in the future are two things, one is pedestrian safety, and the other is proximity of zoning areas. So specifically, as far as pedestrian safety, I'm thinking of situations at Monticello Avenue, especially at the crossroads of Alta Vista, Druid, and Quarry, and also up on Hydraulic and Rio Road, especially near the intersections at twenty-nine. I frequently see people who are not quite old enough to drive, or perhaps to, perhaps have reached a point where they're elderly and not able to drive, or have some other reason that they can't drive, and they are trying to cross the road, and it is clearly not safe, and it's scary, and it's sad, and it's not the community that we want. So I'm asking you to be creative in coming up with solutions about that, including if it means working with the county. The other thing that I'm hoping you can pay attention to in whatever decisions you're asked to make, is when the highway zoning is right next to R-one and R-two zoning, and I'm especially thinking about Alta Vista Avenue, in between Monticello Road and Monticello Avenue, where literally residential backyards can look over their fence into highway zoning. It is not currently developed in ways that are hugely incompatible, but I think it would be unfortunate if someone was trying to play with their kids, grow their garden, hang their clothes on the line right next to some of these non-compatible activities. I think that right now, people coming along sixty-four from out of town, and people who are in town, have plenty of highway commercial activities at the Pantops intersection with sixty-four, and the Fifth Street intersection with sixty-four. I don't think that we would benefit hugely by having more highway commercial activities at the intersection of sixty-four and Monticello there at twenty, and I think it would be much better to, if y'all could do whatever's in your power, to keep it green, and to try to bring to fruition the plan for pedestrian access from the city up to the Monticello Trail. So thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eugene.
Um, Eugene, Eugenio Scatini, I live on, live on Douglas Avenue in Belmont, and I'm here to talk about the zoning text amendment.
With the mic, and you, yeah, thanks.
Okay. I'm here tonight to express my concerns about the impact of the passage of this amendment, and the future it will have on the development on the highway corridor, zoning especially and specifically to Belmont, the Monticello Road Corridor. I request this amendment be tabled, or restructured, or rewritten to exclude the Monticello Corridor. For this proposed use of the drive-through restaurant is incompatible with the character of the neighborhood of this entrance corridor. Furthermore, many people in our neighborhood are alarmed and angry that this amendment has been proposed without proper communications to the neighbors or to our neighborhood association. Most are even shocked that they find out that this amendment is a result of the Kmart Route twenty-nine proposal, and some are not even aware that that, Monticello Avenue is actually part of that highway corridor designation. So they're wondering, how is something way across town affecting us on the other side of town? So I recommend that, as previously pointed out by Ms. Hyatt, that the Route twenty-nine parcel be considered separately, and not with the Monticello Corridor, and place, and why place this SUP use on the matrix, on the planning matrix that's in the zoning regulations? So, because it will be aggressively opposed to by the Belmont residents in the future if this SUP should ever be proposed for use for that area, so why go there? Even the staff reports within handouts that I was reading, note issues with the Fifth Street Corridor and the Monticello Corridor allowing this restaurant or drive-through restaurant use. So then why should we even consider it, or why should we even consider the Monticello Corridor or the Belmont area for this use, which is incompatible? And on further note, I think that the entrance corridor from Monticello through Belmont on Monticello Corridor is one of the most scenic and delightful ways to come into the city, and it's really one of the more wonderful ways to come into the city from sixty-four, and it's a really wonderful connection, very rural, and we should try to strive to preserve it or to enhance it, and allowing drive-through restaurants really doesn't do that. Thank you, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker and members of the city council, and my name's Paul Long, I live at one hundred Ridge Street here in the city, and I'm coming here tonight to talk about public transportation. Several months ago, the Charlottesville area transit had a, several meetings that, where they were explaining some changes that they were proposing to make in the transit system. One of them was actually taking the Route seven bus off Route twenty-nine and changing it to alternate roads, because they said it was taking too much time for the Route seven to go out to twenty, Route twenty-nine. And I strongly oppose that, because there, and there's a lot of, Route twenty-nine is one of the major commercial street in the area, and a lot of people use Route seven, and that's the most frequent bus that the CAT operates to get to these commercial establishments, as well as the main post office, and if the surrounding areas need a public transit service, then additional public transit service should be provided for them. And also, several neighborhoods, including the Tenth and Page area, and African-American communities, actually are not adequately serviced by public transit, and, you know, that, that's not right. And also, this wasn't recently, but it happened a year or two ago, a decision was made that instead of having bus stops every block, it would be held every three to five blocks. And that's, it's counterproductive, when there's a reported decline in ridership, to make elderly people like myself have to walk three to five blocks to get to a bus station. We need to have bus stops at every block. And I would also like to say that nine years ago, in two thousand and nine, when Mayor Norris was mayor, the state legislature approved giving Alamo County and the city of Charlottesville authority to sort of public transit authority. And that's never been implemented, and I can't blame the current city council for not doing that, because the city hasn't initiated that for the past nine years. This city and the surrounding areas, we need a public transit authority, and I also believe that the surrounding counties should be invited to participate as well. Charlottesville is not a small southern college town anymore. I've been living here twenty years, all you have to do is ride around Alamo County and the city to see the construction that's going on, the commercial construction in the city, the residential construction in Alamo County, and all you have to do is ride around the city and see the traffic congestion we need, and really adequate, we need, our public transit system needs to be vastly improved. And I think instead of having yearly meetings when CAT proposes their changes, we need to have a regional meeting with the county, the city, and the surrounding counties, how to initiate a first-rate public transit system in this area. Thank you very much.
So Mayor Walker has just given me the nod that I can respond to you, because Mayor Walker and I are both on the Regional Transit Partnership, and that, that was instituted about a year ago by this Alamo County and the city of Charlottesville. The goal of that organization, that group, and we're city, county, and university, is to do the research, pull together the, the different data from Jaunt, from the Charlottesville Area Transit, and from the University Transit, to start seeing if there is a middle ground en route to getting a regional transit authority, to just getting better memorandums, understandings, and agreements between those three players, so that we provide better service, that means better coverage and higher frequency. Tomorrow, Wednesday, we're going to be getting a report back to the Regional Transit Partnership from a workshop that we took in June, where there is gonna be recommendations that we give our respective bodies, the council and the board of supervisors, on a direction to go in. And that is, as far as I can see, we're saying, we need to get people to jobs, and we need to be more equitable, so getting the ridership up, so that we get the frequency up, is really a high priority. That hasn't been written in a report yet, but it's what we've been hearing, so that's number one. Number two, and Mayor Walker and I have been exchanging emails, I am concerned that CAT is making changes that are not, that sound more drastic than minor, and, and we have had conversations, when we have seen any recommendations by this thing called the Transit Development Plan from CAT and Jaunt, that we wanted to make sure we will, we're not cutting service to our African-American communities. So what we, we, I can say, and I'm sure that we can both say, we're gonna follow up on that very keenly, and, and get more answers, and Mr. Murphy, too, we really do wanna find out what changes were agreed to and implemented on the part of CAT, because it, it, my understanding was it was gonna be much more of a decision that would warrant council review, and I could have been totally misunderstanding that, but it certainly wasn't a decision that the RTP made, and it certainly isn't a decision that the Metropolitan Planning Organization makes. So I just wanted to find out what that decision tree was, when the decision was made, and, and who made it, and is it cast in stone?
And we just started having these conversations last week, when we found out that the changes had been made, and I am on the CAT Advisory Board, and I wasn't aware that the changes had been voted on. We were given a presentation by a consultant, but we weren't told that those changes would take effect, and so I'm just trying to get some clarity on that, and we're still waiting. But I was contacted after a Facebook thread about people not being able to get where they, they needed to be based on the changes, so that's how, and then we started our conversation, I emailed to see if Councilor Galvin was aware that these changes had taken place, and neither one of us, so we are trying to figure, figure that out now.
Mayor Walker, Ms. Galvin, and members of the council, I also think that we've reached a point, and I'm glad that UVA and the county and the city are working together in this working group, but I think as we've reached a point where we have to start considering inviting the surrounding counties to participate as well. The seventeen years that I worked at UVA Medical Center, and this is anecdotal, but I'd ask a lot of people who drove into work that lived in the surrounding counties, if there was a bus route that you could take to get into work, and then a bus route that you could take to go home, would you use that instead of driving in? And a lot of people said yes. So I think we've reached a point that we're a regional, you know, urban area, that we should invite the surrounding counties to participate as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Louis Schultz, I live at eighteen oh nine East Market Street. At the August sixth meeting, which only happened because council finally acknowledged that it had been flagrantly breaking the law for years by illegally canceling an August meeting, I reminded council of Section thirteen of the city charter, an act of the General Assembly which council also must obey, and which has been the law since nineteen seventy-two. Section thirteen says, "At each regular meeting of the council, the proceedings of the last regular meeting and all intervening called meetings shall be presented and thereupon be corrected." be corrected if erroneous and signed by the person presiding for the time being." The response to my reminder was shocking. Rather than following the requirements of Charter Section 13 and approving the minutes of special closed meetings that took place on July 18th, 20th, 24th, and 31st, Deputy City Attorney Allison Davies announced that council would simply ignore that law. Counselor Galvin later pulled the minutes of the July 16 regular meeting from the consent agenda again in violation of the law. To someone who hasn't been closely following local news, that may seem like a trivial matter. It isn't. News reports say that at least one and maybe more of those secret meetings, counselors who weren't in town participated by telephone. The city spokesman told me directly that at one of them, a counselor listened by phone but didn't vote. The background information of Item 6 on tonight's agenda, written by Deputy City Attorney Davies, says there are strict rules governing remote participation in council meetings. Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2 only authorizes remote electronic participation in a meeting if the public body has adopted a written policy allowing for and governing participation of its members by electronic communication means. Item 6 proposes a remote meeting policy for council's approval. The clerk of council and the city spokesman have both confirmed that there is no such policy currently in place, and there wasn't at the time of the recent remote participation. That fact would be recorded in the meeting minutes that I mentioned earlier, and it appears that Ms. Davies advised council to violate the law at the last meeting and not disclose or approve those minutes because it would have revealed that council had violated FOIA's open meeting laws and might be subject to penalties. That wasn't the end of Ms. Davies' questionable advice at the last meeting. Later, she advised the mayor and council that revealing the benefits section of the interim city manager's contract would be unprecedented and a violation of his personal privacy, which is protected by law. First of all, there is no human resource policy either locally or otherwise, as several counselors alleged in their attack on the mayor, that would prohibit her or anyone else from publicly discussing any element of the negotiations with the final contract. Secondly, Maurice Jones' employment agreement, complete with benefits, is available right now on the city's own website and has been for many years. Thirdly, Section 2.2-3705.1.1 of the Code of Virginia cited by Ms. Davies at the last meeting and within Mr. Murphy's contract as justification for keeping it secret in part says, "No provision of this chapter shall be construed as denying public access to contracts between a public body and its officers, employees, other than contracts settling public employee employment disputes." Fourth, Ms. Davies claimed to have contacted the Freedom of Information Advisory Council and to have searched their website. I actually did both, and neither in agreement with Ms. Davies' interpretation of the law. Mr. Murphy's employment agreement is a public record subject to full disclosure whether he or anyone else likes it or not.
Thank you. All right. Well, what's happening over here is our city attorney is taking notes, so we'll...
Certainly.
Yep. The statement. Tony Wash. Good evening.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, council members, I would like to address a safety problem that I'm sure you're not aware of, and that is in our city. City zoning, and I don't mean to quote things that my former speaker just did, City zoning code 34-353 allows the minimum length of a townhouse driveway in the city to be 10 feet. According to the Highway Safety Institute, the standard family car today is 15 feet long, with SUVs being longer. This length, and you don't need to do math, this length results in cars on a 10-foot driveway always hanging over and blocking sidewalks. Many townhouse driveways on my street, on Bookwood Drive, always have cars parked that are blocking the sidewalks, always. This creates a very serious hazard for children riding bikes, skateboards, wagons, big wheels, even adults who are walking on the street on the sidewalk. They must enter the street to go around the parked cars, which make them accessible to being hit by vehicles that are driving on the street. Just a few months ago in my neighborhood, we had a child riding a bike on the sidewalk and had to go around onto the street to go around a parked car in the driveway. She saw an oncoming car and panicked and fell off the bike. Thank God that driver was able to stop, or I would be in front of you using lot stronger language on this subject. And not to bore you with facts, but it is a fact that the Virginia Code 46.2-1220 and Section 10.250, did you all get this? 050. And even our own city ordinance, Section 15-151 prohibits driving or parking on any sidewalks. Not only Section 28-20 of our own ordinance prohibits any vehicle from blocking a sidewalk, our city ordinance, Section 15-142, requires the police to ticket any vehicle that is blocking sidewalks. Now, let's be realistic, our police has a lot more important matters than ticketing parked cars blocking sidewalks. Enforcement is not the point that I'm trying to raise in this address. I want to point out that the past is the past, and we need to address the future. To solve this safety problem, we need to change the present building code to require all new townhouse developments being built or planned in our city to have a minimum driveway length of 20 feet. Matter of fact, Virginia Code 46.2-1239 requires a minimum driveway length of 20 feet, but they added a section that the local municipality can make a change to that. It is your responsibility to make sure that our children, our citizens, can be able to play and walk on the sidewalks safely. Now, I'd like to add one more thing since I have some time.
Thank you, we are, it's up.
I got time, don't I? It did. Didn't go off.
Yeah.
I'd just like to add one more thing, if you don't mind.
She does mind. Mine does.
Go ahead.
They mind?
No, you go.
This past, last weekend, I walked in a downtown mall on Friday night, the 10th. I walked in a downtown mall Saturday morning and Saturday afternoon, the 11th, went back Saturday evening to have dinner in a downtown mall. I felt completely safe. And I would like to congratulate our police chief, who has only been on the job for two months, and I think did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Morgan Butler. All right, we are...
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council and staff.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Morgan Butler, and I'm with the Southern Environmental Law Center, and I'd like to offer SELC's thoughts on the proposed zoning text amendment that's before you tonight that relates to drive-through windows. And I'd like to do so from the perspective of having been one of the members that served on the planning panel that recently developed the Hydraulic Small Area Plan. Now, as we all know, the area around the hydraulic 29 intersection is far from inviting to anyone who does not own a car. The area is characterized by suburban-style shopping centers with huge parking lots and busy travelways. It's an outdated development pattern in which the car is king, and this puts up barriers to people who rely on other means of getting around. This pattern also makes it very difficult to provide good transit, and the huge parking lots it necessitates take up valuable space that could instead provide opportunities for housing and other uses. So, it's not surprising that one of the top priorities of the Hydraulic Small Area Plan is to guide the evolution of the area around the hydraulic intersection into, in the words of the plan itself, a more equitable and environmentally sustainable community. The plan envisions the area transforming into a more vibrant setting that includes a greater mix and diversity of land uses, and that breaks down barriers by providing better and safer options for walking, transit, and biking. In short, the land use plan focuses the future of this area on building community at least as much as accommodating automobiles. Of course, things are not going to transform overnight. Among other things, the hydraulic area needs its own unique set of zoning rules that will help move things in the right direction over time. But until we can get to setting the zoning right, we must make sure we don't do anything that makes the zoning worse. And we are concerned that adding drive-through windows as a special use would make the zoning worse because it's a use that promotes more driving, discourages walking in transit, and thereby undercuts key goals for transforming the area. Please keep in mind that the proposal before you tonight is not an attempt to take away a currently permissible use because it's inconsistent with the Small Area Plan. Rather, it's an attempt to add an entirely new use to the list of permissible uses in spite of its being inconsistent with the Small Area Plan. In other words, it's a step backwards from where we are now, and one that we urge you not to take. Thank you again for the chance to comment.
Thank you. Elliot Brown.
I'd like to give my time to Mr. Turner.
Dr. Turner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
You know, on June 30th, 2018, the Charlottesville City Commonwealth Attorney announced that he had hired five assistant Commonwealth Attorneys. Well, bringing impressive qualifications to their new position, unfortunately for our community, none of these attorneys were black. The NAACP Legal Regress Committee met with the Commonwealth Attorney on Friday, August 17th, regarding the lack of racial diversity in his office. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that he understands what this means to the City of Charlottesville. A competent, well-centered, African-American attorney could bring to this office a unique cultural awareness and authentic historical perspective and a genuine commitment to the tradition, values, and networks that have been the basis for Black identity in America. An African-American attorney might better understand and address the disportionality, high rates of interaction that African-Americans and other people of color have with the criminal justice system, as well as other unique challenges they may face. This perspective could be invaluable and discharge many of the duties of the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, including crime prevention, negotiation of settlements, and determining suitable and effective punishment for crime. If the Commonwealth Attorneys are to fulfill the mission of their office, which is pursuing justice and protecting the rights and safety of the Commonwealth citizens, then they should comprise a diverse team that reflects the racial diversity of the population they serve. As one of our NAACP members recently remarked, it's not just the absence of diversity and inclusiveness of attorneys that must be addressed, they are part of a systemic disenfranchisement over policing and disparate treatment of African-Americans and other people of color. In short, the hiring of African-American attorneys would bring to the table an important perspective of what constitutes fairness, justice, compassion, and could help the Commonwealth Law Office fulfill their mandates to prosecute and handle issues of justice with integrity, equality, and excellence. I want to say one more thing. I don't know, I know the position of the Commonwealth Attorney is elected position. I don't know if the council fell asleep at the wheel. I don't know what you can do to put pressure on the Commonwealth Attorney to hire a diverse staff. Someone, some citizen, someone in Charlottesville has to make sure that this important office, one of the most important offices in Charlottesville, have a diverse staff. And no one said anything about it. I would imagine that when Joe announced this on June 30th, that very few people, very few people thought anything of it, because the majority of people in Charlottesville would rather have business as usual. No one talked about it. No one talks about it today. This is probably a surprise to many people in Charlottesville that the Commonwealth Attorney Office hired five attorneys, and none of them are black. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Turner. Dr. Turner, Dr. Turner. So, I can't speak for my colleagues, I do know, dropped the ball. I dropped the ball. I didn't think about this or even know anything about it until you and I had our conversation, was that last Sunday, if I'm not mistaken? I mean, you're the one that brought it to my attention. I had a conversation with Mr. Patania yesterday at the basketball games at Tom's Park. He told me that you two had a conversation that went well. So, it's my expectation that this will be addressed moving forward. As you stated, Mr. Patania's position is elected, and he informed me, and I know Mr. Patania rather well, he informed me that he was going to be doing everything he can to ensure that his office works with equity, it has practices, excuse me, equitable practices moving forward.
You know, Wes, white folks say that all the time, that something's going to happen soon. You know how long people wait? Been waiting a long time. But thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Dr. Turner, excuse me.
And I'll add that I have been, you know, I've had a few conversations with the Commonwealth Attorney Office just about what does, you know, change look like. I sent a program that they're doing in Richmond to them, you know, that would replace jail time, they, you know, could be used as a diversionary program, they were already working on it. So, I have been attempting to have conversations, and they've been received, but like you said, seeing it in action. I know recently, Zionah Bryant met with the prosecutor and the Commonwealth Attorney, and she had some dialogue around changes that needed to be made, you know, in the office. So, that, there are people having the conversation in pockets, but I think overall, it is definitely one of the areas that we were pushing up into the election to make sure that that office was transformed. So, I am hoping that we are able to continue those conversations and hopefully, hopefully get something accomplished there that would make it more equitable outcomes for people in the, that enter into the criminal justice system. Well, we do have a lot of work to do, and I think we all know that that is one of the areas that we really have to do, do better. And it's one of the areas where we know during the last campaign season that Mr. Fogel's policies were very progressive, and it's the ones that, you know, the direction that overall we need to be headed into, and that other progressive areas across the country, that's the direction that they are, that they are going.
All right. Rosia Parker. Oh, can I say one more thing before you get up? Sorry, because it's just a good time to bring this point up. So, Mr. Wash was up here, and there were members of the audience who did not want him to continue speaking, and there was conversation to, you know, directed at me to cut, cut him off. Then Mr. Turner came, and he went over his time, too, which I just had this discussion on social media about the fact that I'm usually allowing people to finish, finish their thoughts.
on social media about the fact that I'm usually allowing people to finish, finish their thoughts, and it was applause for him. And so, just if I had cut Mr. Walsh off, as you all were suggesting, then it would have been the expectation to be fair and equitable, which is what we're talking about, for as soon as Dr. Turner's time would have been up, that I would have cut him off. So, I just want to make sure that we, we are clear on the process that we are demanding in the room, or at least some of us, so. Oh, I know, and I sent an email, because I don't start the time, but we did, yeah. No, I know you were, but there were some others, so I'm not talking about, about you all, but I just wanted to, to point that out since it just happened. So, Rosia Parker, sorry.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good evening. How are you?
Mike, can I have my awards back now, since you told that lie on Front Line, that I didn't really appreciate you lying and saying that we did not give you information when you had so much? Can I have my defense awards back? Because I helped defend this city where you did not do that. And for you to keep continuously receiving awards for the behalf of the citizens of Charlottesville?
Yes.
That's not right. And then for you to sit and lie on Front Line like you did, that definitely wasn't right. But I'm not going to go in on you tonight. But I still would like to know, from the Chief of Police, the answers to, as the People's Coalition came to you, why wasn't our brown community taken care of? It was told to us that it would be in the discussion of, when y'all brought it to the community, that y'all were filling in the gaps of what the community had presented. Those gaps wasn't filled then, because I parked in those gaps to see how well those gaps was going to be filled. And y'all keep saying that it was contradictory even in presenting it to the community, that y'all started a year ago, then y'all started a couple of months ago. Well, it couldn't have been a year ago because the HEFE report didn't come out till November, December, and the chief hadn't been here two months. So, where is the discussion, and still where was the demand for that $2 million to be spent of taxpayers' money that could be used for affordable housing? I still say that I'm a victim, and I'm still being victimized from last year, this year. So, how many more years is it going to take for this city to get our safety under control when we're paying y'all salaries to protect us? I still don't feel protected in this city, and I don't think I ever will. For one, Mike, the way you presented what, you felt that the city and the community, but what community are you talking about? Because we are the community that are in unity, and we have been in unity for a long time, and we're doing what y'all are not doing. But for you to present it the way that you did, you wasn't very enthusiastic about it. I mean, even in your breathing and the way you presented it, it didn't even seem like you wanted to even really be like, oh, well, this is what we're going to do. It's like, um, well, this is, you know, as a citizen, to watch the reaction of people and what we've been through in being victims, and the way that you said it, that's not convincing because I'm still trying to figure out what community are you referring to? Because we are community. Charlottesville is community, and I believe we're still in unity.
Ms. Parker. So, thanks for your comments. Chief, I do have one question for, well, I don't know if it'd be for you or Mr. Murphy, in regards to one of the items that Ms. Parker raised. I was on the conference call when they met with the, the People's Coalition, and I do remember, I, I do have some concerns in regards to the point about, that was made, that neighborhoods such as Friendship Court and whatnot would have special parking or whatnot, and Ms. Parker, as well as Ms. Turner and others, have expressed to me that they parked there during the weekend and that there were no, from their point of view or vantage point, there was no parameter made specifically for those neighborhoods that were high-risk. Is there any way that we can address that? I don't know if that's a tactical plan that you can speak to, or just so that their concern can be heard or addressed in some regard? Thank you.
Good evening, Chief Brackney. So, we were on the phone, we committed to the new parking plan. They had requested that there be no parking in those areas, and that was actually enforced and announced on all the websites, and there were no parking was put in, particularly so that there were no one coming, there were more people coming in from the community who would be able to park in those areas. So, that was posted, no parking was put in place, and that was accomplished. So, I'm not sure where, what the, the question is around special parking. There was a request that we would put barricades up to enter into every one of the public housing communities, that we would man the barricades, but then there was also the, the contradictory request that we not patrol any of the neighborhoods. And that was put in writing from the People's Coalition, if you remember and have that documented as well. So, you cannot barricade up a particular community and then not have any access or patrolling to the communities. Part two of that is, we did make the, the promise that we would patrol, send extra patrols to vulnerable communities, and that was in place. We were not parking in any particular place. We were actually doing vulnerable community patrols, and that is the best practice versus sitting in one place and not being visible throughout the entire community. So, that's how the patrolling plan was in place. It was executed. We heard back from several of the public officials that they were in those communities and saw the patrolling as well. So, if someone is saying that there was no patrolling in the vulnerable communities, they can bring that to my attention. You can email me at chief@charlottesville.org. There's also the community hotline that Mr. Wheeler quit as well for feedback as well, someone is saying that that was not. And what we can also do is look at the, the ECC calls, what that looked like as officers were putting out where they were patrolling.
You got to give us the acronym.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Emergency Communication Center, 911, officers were talking about where they were, and we had a complete plan of where each of the officers were stationed in those communities. So, if there's someone who needs additional information or support, or supporting documentation, please feel free to email me that, and then I can look those up individually at chief@charlottesville.org, or follow up with the hotline. Mr. Wheeler, I don't have the hotline available or memorized like he did announce, but they can put that there, and we can respond to those as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
434-970-3109 is the hotline number.
Thank you.
And let's, we can't have the answer to what I'm asking, because that was not what we was talking about. We was not talking about public housing. We was talking about Friendship Court, and there was no parking put there.
So, you're saying you park inside of it or out on the side?
We parked at Friendship Court. Five cars from, when we came from UVA, we was looking for parking. I said, well, matter of fact, I said, since these people said that these things was going to be in place, well, let's ride around town and see if these things was put in place. I wasn't talking about public housing because I knew we had millennium, and yes, they did increase, but my thing is, I didn't hear about a whole lot of different increase much in Rose Hill, and I definitely didn't, didn't see as I watched from sitting downtown Friday and Saturday and not seeing much of a police presence to be able to protect Friendship Court again. And there was supposed to have been ample, no parking there. So, it still was, Sixth Street, Crescent Hall, all of that still was open to somebody being able to come in there.
And I know, I was down Friendship Court in the 420 block, and there were officers there, but again, it wasn't every, I wasn't down there every hour, so I don't know what happened. And then they were outside of the entrance across from ACAC at one time when I entered that. But again, I was just driving around town, so I don't know how frequently, but I know that, at least on those two occasions, that, that they, they were present. But again, the 48 hours, I cannot, I wasn't there the whole time.
But I can say, because I can contest to it, and I could also have witnesses here on the next city council meeting that can say what was said and what was done. That was the same letter that she's referring to that y'all have, that all of it was not done correctly. And I'm not going to be called a liar when you told it to the people, and y'all said it in front of the people when y'all presented it.
I'm not calling you a liar.
I'm not saying you are.
Oh.
Mayor, I just want to clarify that the parking restrictions that the city enacted around Friendship Court, right, Second Street, Leavy, Sixth Street, Monticello, are streets that we can patrol. Inside of the private space that is maintained by PHA, if somebody parks inside there, as is the case on any other day, if they want to tow cars out of there, the, the folks who manage Friendship Court would have to do that. We didn't stop people from going to park inside Friendship Court. We said that we would stop people from parking on all four sides of it, which is what we did.
This was outside of Friendship Court. And I said that several times, it was outside of Friendship Court, not deep inside.
So, Mr. Murphy, ju- just for, because I know we have to continue to move on, but what I feel like I'm hearing from Ms. Parker and from others are, they mean the actual spaces that are along the street, that are actually on Garrett Street and the...
Monticello.
Monticello.
And the back on the hill.
So, I think the... So, I think the expectation was that those spaces would be blocked off, there would be no parking, and if they weren't, if that, if that wasn't the case, or if that was the case, I think that may be a place or area in which we could either communicate it differently, or we can work together moving forward in terms of finding a solution. So, I hear wholeheartedly where those members are coming from, I think we all do, and I think...
So, what was in place? Sorry for interrupting.
No, no, you're fine.
Was it, was it signs up, or was...
Yeah. So, Chief Brackney is shaking, for those who can't see, Chief Brackney is shaking her head, yes, the signs were up.
They had to put 48-hour notices up for no parking. You can't just put them up. So, they put up the no parking signs as well as there was patrolling. So, if someone is saying that is it, we cannot, as was adequately reported, we cannot block off the streets so no one else can come in there except residential areas, because then at each of those barricades, you must have somebody then checking your identification. Then we would have had to, if you were coming to visit, how do we then say, you can come into that area and visit? So, there was a no parking. So, it's the no parking is what we agreed to, and as a result of the community meeting that you were on the phone with.
Right.
Is what we always agreed to. We agreed to no parking around the community, in which we have control over the public streets, not the private property, and we also agreed to putting up the signs, we also agreed to increase patrols. Those are the three things that we did agree to in that meeting, if you're correct, and that's what your recollection is as well.
But I think that's what she's saying, they were able to park on the outside of the...
So, people could ignore the no parking signs, I think that's...
So, if someone ignored the no parking sign and the officers didn't see it, or they could have called 911, I mean, if they're saying there was a complaint there, then all they can do is just email me that, and we can say, you know, we can look into, look into that. So, we can work on better solutions, better communications, and manage expectations of what it is someone would want around the parking in the community as we move forward for the next years and future.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Excuse me, Chief, though, so if, if it did work as intended, the police officers would have ticketed the parked cars, and then they would have been towed, or they would have just been fined? What was going to be the consequence if somebody violated?
So, as a part of our triaging and what we were doing, if you notice, there was a lot of ticketing and towing of cars throughout the entire weekend. I'm sure we can get the numbers to you. There was quite a bit.
Or the after-action report.
Yeah. We'll talk about that, just how many things were in place. So, yes, the plan would be ticketing and towing as well.
Which is not, I mean, what I think the community needs, I mean, those ticketing, the towing fees, they are quite, they are expensive, you know?
That's, that's correct. So, now, so what, that's what we're attempting to balance right now. The community said they wanted, they didn't want parking there. So, now, we put up the no parking signs, we put up the, the ability to enforce them. So, I guess the complaint is, is that the signs were up and they were able to park there. And so, I, I'm not sure what you're, what you want us to balance, and we can figure that out as well.
Okay.
Okay? We can work on that in the future as to what that expectation is.
There may, there may have been some gaps in the no parking sign coverage in that area, and I think it's important for us just to verify if there was.
Yeah, or that the signs go up and then other people do take them down. So, that you're constantly always trying to, to manage putting up the signs. Again, when we're talking about the overall plan of the weekend, that is something else that we hear from the community. We'll integrate it into our community concerns, feedback to our partners as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Emily Dreyfus.
Good evening. My name is Emily Dreyfus. I'm here on behalf of the Legal Aid Justice Center and the Charlottesville Low Income Housing Coalition, and I would like to share information from a petition that I think y'all are aware of. We now have over 15, or about 1,500 signatures in just over two weeks, including those on change.org and also paper copies. Couple points I just want to emphasize. I was at a meeting of a committee, subcommittee of the Housing Advisory Committee today, and there was a lot of discussion of a timeline that was presented for peer-to-peer outreach to make sure that the voices of people who haven't been involved so far are more heard and represented at the table, because the comp plan efforts to engage the community have largely left out black folks and poor folks. And the timeline that I believe we came to agreement on is very tight, because the last four months of delays have meant that now we're looking at a timeline of hiring and securing a consultant that will bump into the holidays and bump into putting outreach workers on the streets in the coldest months of the year. Very frustrating, but I wanted to urge you to work through your processes to make sure that as soon as the first meeting in September happens, that you can have the discussion about the proposal that comes from NDS in order to make sure that gets put in place as quickly as possible. I know that the work session is not until August 30th, but I hope that you can move things forward very quickly. And also want to just mention for the public that there, that the work session is on August 30th, 5:00 at City Space. And one last point before I share the petition is that we really want to make sure there is no comp plan until there is a housing strategy. So, the petition states that Charlottesville's affordable housing crisis is getting worse every day. We now have a shortage of over 3,300 affordable rentals, record-high rents, and longtime residents getting priced out and pushed out of our community. This is not just an economic problem, it's a racial justice problem. Black residents are being hit hardest of all. The situation isn't new. It comes out of a history of racist urban renewal programs that bulldoze black-owned homes and destroyed black-owned businesses here in Charlottesville. Our city is on track to become a playground for millionaires and tourists with almost no options left for lower-income people, the backbone of our economy. It doesn't have to be this way. The city has done almost nothing to fix this problem for decades, but that can change. We call upon our government to take action immediately. To Neighborhood Development Services, stop delaying. Show that you take these issues seriously by putting community-supported proposals promptly before city council. The first priority is to fulfill plans for community-based peer-to-peer outreach focused on very low-income residents. Outreach should finish by November 30th, and a housing strategy should be drafted no later than January 31st, 2019. There should be no new comp plan until there's a comprehensive housing strategy. And to you all, city council, invest in public housing. The city should include an ambitious bond issue in the 2019 budget to address the need for affordable housing with an initial bond issuance of at least $50 million as a down payment toward the total amount that the forthcoming housing strategy will determine our community needs. This must be the top priority bond and should provide substantial funding for public housing redevelopment and modernization. Bond funds could also drive other ways to stop displacement and create more affordable housing. Money has slowed redevelopment down in the past, and the city needs to get serious. Approve the NDS proposal for community-based peer-to-peer outreach and require a fast timeline for completing the housing strategy. Accountability is in your hands, and delays need to stop. Expand community-based economic development. Affordable housing needs to go hand-in-hand with additional strategies to improve low-income people's earnings and provide opportunities for homeownership. We know that Charlottesville can rise to the challenges ahead. Our city has the power to solve its affordable housing crisis. We urge you to take this opportunity to steer Charlottesville toward a more just, equitable, and inclusive future. And for the public, if anyone is interested in more information about this, feel free to give me a call at 529-1809, or you can call the main number at Legal Aid Justice Center and ask for Emily. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dreyfus, Ms. Dreyfus, FYI, notes are well-taken. There's going to be a quick, we, a couple of members from the housing... a quick, we, a couple of members from the Housing, um, the CRHA Board, as well as a couple of members from FAR and community members, we're going to have a meeting this week to actually talk about some of these things.
Great.
Um, so we are paying attention to it. I'm also going to be reporting back to Council the findings of said meeting, and, um, just know that we're not just sitting here not listening.
Thank you.
We hear you.
I appreciate your work on this.
Okay.
No, I think it's a great push, so, you know, and to make us make sure that we are, you know, paying, paying attention and that we know, and that we start talking about these large, um, amounts of money that it's going to actually take to actually, you know, even begin to, um, to fix this process, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And we, again, we do have that work session on the thirtieth, and I think, just to get back from the Housing Advisory Committee, at least two hours is not going to cut it, but we'll see how far we get, and then we recognize that we need to be able to set up follow-up meetings to have, continue this discussion, because happening on a Monday night isn't feasible either, so I think these more focused conversations are going to be more of the norm, so.
And Mayor Walker, if I may say something, um, I really appreciate the, um, rigorous timeline, uh, that's excellent, and I think, uh, August twenty-third, when we're talking about the, um, the NDS efficiency study, we're also going to be talking about what are the resources that are needed to do the comprehensive plan, but make sure that is, has an integrated housing product, affordable housing production strategy woven into it, and then how we're going to immediately go into changing our zoning that is going to make it compatible with the goals that we have as a community. So I think we're all on the same page on that one, and I, I think the January deadline is really very important, and I think the peer-to-peer outreach is essential, so thank you.
Let's vote on it.
That was a good one.
Ashley Davies.
Good evening, Mayor Walker, members of Council. My name's Ashley Davies, um, I'm a land use planner at Williams Mullen, and I'm here tonight representing Riverbend Development. I want to thank all of you for your consideration of the zoning text amendment regarding drive-through windows, um, that you'll be discussing tonight. I am handing out the memo we sent on Friday that reiterates our points as to why we hope you'll support this request, and, um, you know, I wanted to basically reiterate that throughout all of the mixed-use zoning districts, fast-food restaurant is currently a by-right use, so we're not asking for a new use. The by-right use is the fast-food restaurant, and that's defined as one in which patrons order and receive food orders at a window for consumption either on or off premises. Once again, this is already a by-right use. Um, what we're asking is that you actually be able to drive up to that window that's already existing. Um, so I, I wanted to say that I, I really appreciate a lot of the comments that you heard tonight, and I know that Heather commented on this as well. I think there is a zoning issue with the Belmont entrance corridor that is totally unlike the hydraulic twenty-nine area. I will say that we've studied the hydraulic small-area plan from cover to cover, and in no, no part of it does it restrict, prohibit, or not allow drive-throughs, or say that there's anything wrong with that or bad with that. Um, in fact, it talks about, talks about appropriate urban form coming, does not come in a one-size-fits-all and promotes flexibility. It even says that within the designated areas that are established, some are going to be more like neighborhood streets, yet others are auto-oriented fronting on high-volume arterial roadways. So, um, I say that because I think we're, you know, we are the ones that are actually, have the property, and we want to transform it into this amazing space. We're the ones that want to take away these giant parking lots that everybody is against, but, you know, really, at the end of the day, we're trying to do a coffee shop with a window on it, on the hydraulic twenty-nine corridor. So if that's, if that's upsetting folks in Belmont, I don't want that to be the case, but I hope that we can work together and find a way to accomplish this goal, because it certainly is not at odds in any way, shape, or form with the hydraulic small-area plan, and it's going to be a part of a larger commercial mixed-use redevelopment of that property that we hope to really invigorate the city. Um, and I think the fact is, you know, our lives are just getting busier and busier, and we really want to provide options and flexibility for the community. It's just one option, and, um, we think it's a really important one, so I thank you for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Um, Dave, this is Gamanti, okay, G, that's what's on the paper. How are you?
My name is Dave, I am what Mike Murphy, Mike call an Albemarle County customer. So hello, Nakaya, and what's up, bootlickers? The official state of emergency was lifted last week, but Charlottesville remains in a state of true emergency. Too many people for too long are facing the emergency of houselessness and gentrification. Too many face the daily emergency of trying to find their next meal, and too many are facing medical emergencies that leave them in debt. The declaration of a state of emergency two weeks ago was illegal and an attempt to intimidate peaceful protesters. And this council's utter disregard for its residents' human rights is a moral failure. Last meeting, Nakaya Walker was the only counselor to vote against giving interim city manager Murph the power to declare that state of emergency. Democracy dies with these four-one votes at midnight. Murph slipped up in that meeting and referred to the police as troops, and he had to quickly recant that. Wes, who's been getting some praise since August twelfth, voted for the state of emergency, which opened the floodgates for overpolicing, overtime pay, and the deployment of riot gear. August eleventh and twelfth, I believe, were a test run by the government, who will not hesitate to lock us up or kill us when the one percent feels threatened. This is why people need to stop yammering about voting. The authoritarian police state was brought to us by the Democrat Party. This party runs council and sits in the governor's mansion, and all they do is shit on our civil rights. We must save ourselves for the socialist future, because the Democrats only know how to put lipstick on a capitalist pig. However, it was inspiring to see the fascists in blue get outwitted by UVA Students United. They refuse to be locked up in a cage, which is what Virginia's really good at, caging people. They show that the oppressor can only ride your back if it's bent. The police are an institution that cannot be reformed, they only exist to protect the rich and their property. They need to be dismantled and abolished, and the same people who've been calling for the abolition of ICE need to join the fight to abolish the police. And sorry, I just have to add this real quick, but the identity politics that Mr. Turner was talking about with the DA, the DA is nothing but a cop who wears a suit. Identity politics, you can have a black cop, a black DA, they're not going to help anyone. Black cops shoot and kill black people, too. But this council can start this year by slashing the police budget by ten percent every year. In the meantime, while you're slashing their budget, take away their guns, their tear gas, and their overtime. I miss the good old days when Chief Brackney was doing the electric slide at community picnics. Y'all rolled that fascist out real strong. And last council meeting, she made this joke about saying that everyone can have their NWA moment. I, I thought it was really ironic that a fascist would use the term NWA, and any explanation would be, would be helpful. Good night, Nakaya, and good night, bootlickers.
He should have a TV show. He should join Shirley.
How are you?
Why would I respond to that?
Okay. I thought you were talking, I just wanted to make sure I didn't say...
Really, 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 yeah, really. My skin, my skin is, is, my, my skin is as clear, it's as thick as you will ever get, bro. Trust me, man. Trust me, man. Trust me, my guy.
That was funny to you? That's pretty low.
What he was saying, was it funny to me? What he was saying, yeah, that was funny to me. What, what he was saying was funny to me. What he was saying was funny to me. What do you, what, what part was funny? A lot of it. A lot of it. Basically, the whole thing. All of it was funny. I mean, that's, that's funny.
Nancy O'Brien, we're moving...
I mean, you wearing a beret as if you...
Wes, Wes. Counselor... Wes. Counselor Ballamie, please, please.
Sorry.
All right. Please, um...
Our council is...
Sorry.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Walker and members of Council, I'm not sure I really want to follow that, but, um, I just wanted to say, and this is a sort of different approach or response to the weekend or the last couple of weeks, and I'm going to start with my first experience, which was at the reporting from the pilgrimage, which was, my, um, feeling from that was, we had a group of people who had done a very difficult journey and ended up opening both their hearts and their minds to listen to people among that group that did not agree with them. And I thought there was a great sense of, I left there with a great sense of hope and confidence that that could go forward. I then came to a council meeting that following Monday, and it was entirely different. But I still felt hopeful in that everyone has the same things that they're worried about. So on the weekend, I spent going to the synagogue on Friday night, I went to the, um, First Presbyterian Service on Saturday. On Sunday, I went to a six-thirty worship service at First Baptist West Main, and then I went to the sing-out. I felt very renewed and comforted and hopeful, and like there was a healing process in turn, in, in process. I realized that was not happening everywhere in the city, it was very much what you brought to where you went and where you went, how you experienced that weekend. But I experienced hope, and I experienced a renewal, and I experienced healing. And I'd like to thank those of you who took part in that, and I would also like to thank the clergy, because without the clergy, I think this weekend would not have been as, as comforting, certainly to me, but also to the five hundred people that were at Mount Zion and the hundreds of people that were both at, um, the First Presbyterian Church and at the temple. There were huge crowds of those people, of people at those meetings, and I was thankful for that. So I left there, and I continue to be hopeful that this community, who is concerned about the same products, the same things, the housing, the inequities on both sides, both the clergy things that I went to and to the experiences that other people had in the city, I think we can be united on those issues and hopefully move forward. And I look to your leadership for that, and I hope that that is something we can all support, that you are able to provide. So thank you very much, and thank you to the clergy, and thank you for letting me just share a few thoughts about a city I love and I care for. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Gathers.
Good evening, Mayor Walker, members of Council, and everyone on the desk. Um, I need to be very clear and very specific, um, the things that I want to speak on tonight are just coming directly from me and not from any particular, um, organization or affiliation. Um, I'm going to speak on the, uh, the CRB, um, and these are my own personal feelings. Uh, I want to ask for three things, um, that, uh, that you all provide the CRB support, that you grant, uh, the CRB some level of autonomy, and number three, that you please stay out of the way, let them do the work that they've been tasked to do. We've already, I'm sorry, the CRB has already run into some roadblocks that they've had to come, that they've had to try to cross. One was a request to, to place a ninth member on the board. Um, there was also the request that, that, uh, report form be created and submitted that could go on the city's website, and, and the citizens of the, of Charlottesville need to feel that they can trust that, that, that board or that commission in order to do, to do its work. And, um, we need the support of council in order to, to, to effect that, but we don't need to, the CRB doesn't need to feel monopolized by the city as they try to work through, again, a daunting task that, uh, has been placed before them, as they try to work through the, the organization structure that future CRBs will have. Um, kind of feeling a little bit like the, the bald-headed stepchildren, and no pun intended there, excuse me. Other boards and commissions have the support and have staff members present at their meetings. The second meeting that we, that we just had, we had a staff member present for a presentation early on, but then the individual left, and I don't know if it was a mix-up or a miscalculation or whatever, but even to the point that we didn't have a way to lock up the building that, that we were being able to use. Um, fortunately, I was able to, to locate a back exit and, and slide out and make sure that the front door was locked, but, but just the little things, I mean, even the Blue Ribbon Commission, they, they were granted dinner for the, uh, for the commission and for the citizens who came to those meetings. Um, because of the timing of it, people just didn't have time to stop and eat and take care of that. And thus far, the, and I want to get my, my lettering straight, because I get BRC and CRB mixed up, um, it's amazing that they have the same letters, but the CRB hasn't been granted that same support thus far, and it's important that, that they feel that and that the citizens see that, uh, as they try to work through the organization structure that, um, that, again, in the future, other, other boards would like to, uh, to have in place. So please, just, just be supportive, but, but please don't try to guide or direct the, the conversation or monopolize the, the, the organization in and of itself, and, and please let the, the citizens know that you will grant the, the, that particular board the, the teeth that they need to do the work that's been laid before them, and that you will indeed support their, their mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gathers, is it, is it possible for, um, I know you all have had two meetings thus far, is it possible for you all to provide us with maybe a budget of what you may be looking for? Um, I saw an email today with, with one figure on it, but I would be interested in seeing if it's possible, Mr. Murphy, for us to do similar to what we did for the BRC and provide them with, um, a small stipend of some sorts to, for food, uh, for the members of the panel or those who may be attending the meeting, if that is within our, um, purview?
Well, you all granted, or gave us, you all gave the, the, I'm trying to be very careful how I word this, because I don't want any legal issues to come up, but you, you gave the, uh, the CRB itself a budget, um, to work from. Um, a conversation on the front end would have probably been more appreciated as to what that board needed, uh, moving forward, but that's something that we can at least, it gives, it gives us a beginning point, something we can work from.
Logistically, do we know, how did the, um, the Blue Ribbon Commission, how did they have funds for, like, food for the meetings and all of that good stuff?
So...
Do we know that?
As I recall, I'm in Blue Ribbon Commission, which of course, Mr. Gathers chaired, um, I think had a budget of ten thousand dollars, as I recall, and I think that the preliminary budget that council approved for the CRB is twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, you know, certainly at council's discretion to change the amount, uh, of that appropriation at any time. I think that, um, you know, what most of the money got spent on, and I doubt, I'm sure we could get an accounting, I don't think we spent all the money for the Blue Ribbon Commission, but, um, you know, there were meals, I agree with Mr. Gathers about that because of the timing of the meetings, uh, and also trying to engage people to get out.
And also bringing in a speaker or two.
You know, it's important to not only bring people to you, uh, but, you know, having been a part of a lot of these groups for the city over the years, right, like the Human Rights Commission that... the years, right, like the Human Rights Commission that, or Task Force that preceded the creation of the commission, or the Blue Ribbon Commission, sometimes you want to go to another community and see how they conduct their business. You may want to rent a bus or something to do that. And so I would guess that if the CRB is advancing their work in a way where they know that they need more budget, the, the budget for this doesn't come out of the manager's office. It's, you know, through the chief of staff and the outreach coordinator for council. And I think you just articulate that and bring it back to the next council meeting.
The, the, the CRB may very well want to attend a meeting or forum in Northern Virginia where there's an existing CRB. They may want to attend one down in Eastern Virginia where there's already an existing CRB, just to see how they function and how they work. And depending on the time of, of that meeting, it may even require an overnight stay. So it just, I mean, it just depends.
So, Mr. Murphy, what would be the process of us to be able to allocate more funds? Would they need to provide a written request, or could we just say we want to amp up it in addition on 2,500? Or, I mean, what's the process there?
I think as a matter of good process that, you know, they would have discussion. You would direct either Ms. Rice or Matthew Murphy to create an agenda memo. When you meet on September 17th, you amend their budget with a new appropriation.
Okay.
And I think for food, you can just send, if you all send to page what you want ordered, and we can order it. Is there a different process that y'all wanted to have?
No, no, it's just that we hadn't even been given that particular bit of information.
Okay. All right.
And I do have a question then, too. Like, who is the staff person assigned to, to give them assistance? Is it, is it someone in city's council's office? Is it, is it...
Yeah, so myself, Sarah Brazelton, Matthew Murphy, have all been assigned to work with this group. We've also asked if they want support from legal, if they want support from the police department, to make sure, see what that looks like. At the first meeting, I was unfortunately away with dealing with August 12th stuff, so we had Ms. Brazelton and Mr. Murphy attending that first meeting. And I think there was some, just question as to, you know, the level of staff involvement and some concern as to whether or not the process was trying to be kind of, I guess, taken over by staff. And we certainly didn't want that to be the case. I asked Ms. Brazelton to reach out to the CRB members for, in preparation for their second meeting, to see what level of staff support they wanted or who they wanted in attendance at their second meeting. And they did express that they wanted a city attorney representative in attendance at that second meeting, and that was it for now before, until they kind of discussed what their, you know, future needs would be. And I had a really good meeting this morning with one of the CRB members who expressed that, you know, the administrative support piece is important. And we, of course, have that in place and, and ready to go for those folks.
Yeah, even something as simplistic as just making sure that we have copies of the, the agenda for the meeting. And, and that, that fell through the cracks this past meeting.
And Counselor Hill and I, we talked about setting up a meeting with the CRB members and any staff that you all wanted, just to be clear on what you all would like us consider before the year, before the bylaws are written? Because I feel like that is where the disconnect is coming, that the bylaws are not written, but there are changes that you all would like to make before the year's over. Is that...
Correct. Yes.
Okay. And so...
And right now, we have these, the questions that you provided, and we're going to do our, I think we have, we've already gotten some feedback and had some exchanges. I was going to hopefully bring up during other matters for the public, as a council, we discuss those questions and some of the feedback we've already gotten, so we can be aligned on that. The question is, obviously, knowing you have a meeting on, I think it's the 28th...
Correct. Yes.
It's, do we want to have a meeting of a subsection of us? And we can make it public, if there's more than two of us, that's fine, with some of you. Or is it better for us to try to get representation at that meeting and make sure that we can address all your questions no later than that night? We don't want to over, we don't want to get in your way. Like you said, you want us to be supportive, but to stay out of the way. So that's a balance that we want to provide. But we want to make sure that you have the information and the support you need.
And that's not a question that I'm willing to answer for the entire board. That'd probably be something better addressed through emails to everyone.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Mark Cavett?
Mark Cavett, 400 Altamont Street. I'm here to speak against the change in the highway zoning. Need to mention that this caught a lot of people off guard. There's been a lot in the past five days on social media. Hopefully you all received some emails concerning it. I know I sent you all one email myself. There was also a lot of things on Nextdoor concerning it. I'd like to ask that anyone that's here that's against the change, please stand up at this time.
What's the change?
The change in the, being able to put in the special use permit. Oh, is it, is it...
You're talking about drive-through...
Yes, special use, isn't it?
When zoning...
Basically, that against having a drive-in window be placed. I know that not everybody was able to sign up and be able to speak. I'd like to also comment about some observations that I've seen over the past year or so with council. And that is that you got a board, several boards, BAR, Planning Commission, professional boards, and I've been noticing that, and I'm not the only one that's been noticing this, that council has been having a tendency to overrule those boards. You got people that are in place at these boards, and you should have the feeling that, in most cases, that they're doing a good job and listen to their opinions on things. So I would recommend that you really listen to those opinions and act based on that. Going back to the drive-in window, Ms. Walker, Mayor Walker, I'm sure that you probably would prefer to see a business placed there that's other than a restaurant with low wages. Even a business with retail would probably pay a little bit better wages than a drive-in coffee shop. Mayor Signer, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilor Signer, I've been noticing, you know, you know that I voted, I voted for you and I canvassed for you when you ran for election. And one of the reasons I did so was because you said that you were going to support neighborhoods. And I have to be honest with you, that I've basically seen from your voting racket and others have noticed with your voting racket that that's not been the case. So I hope tonight that that will change a little bit and that we will see you support concerns of neighborhoods. Concerning the right to the restaurant, having to be able to do the restaurant, they do have that right to do the restaurant, but they don't have necessarily the right to do the drive-in window. And I want to make a comment about the project in general. I was there when they first came to the city's staff with the proposal for the plans for that development. And it was basically presented as a development in which it was going to be different from other type of places that we see in shopping centers. Very heavily on pedestrian impact, making it easier for pedestrians to move around in it. And I don't see how you can do that if you're putting in a drive-in window in place. The Planning Commission has previously said no to them on several different things, when they wanted to do something on the side roads. And I would feel that you should support their decision on this, change of this. And it has a very big impact on not just that area, but also on other neighborhoods. Lord, the way it's being written, the proposal on it is very bad. Nothing else, it needs to be rewritten. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just speak for my understanding of this project is, it would not be in, if I had the ability to choose anything that's being proposed going in, in that space. But what I will bring your attention to is that in previous developments, like West Second, we sat and were told that the property owner had a right to do with the property what they desired to do with the property. And so that is what I don't understand about this particular project, which I don't think is the best use of the land based on what we need in the city. But if the property owners have made a decision, I, my question is, what's different about us not being able to tell them what they can do with the space versus an area like what happened with Keith Woodard and West Second Street? So as soon as that can be cleared up for me, then I may be able to vote differently. But that hasn't, none of the conversations centered around this proposal has answered, answered that for me. We don't have anything to do with what they do downtown, but we do have and can dictate what they do on, on hydraulic. It's a little bit confusing, so. All right. Any other comments? All right, we're going to take a break. So we'll be back at, let's say, 9:05. Is that, it's 15, well, we're not going to get back in town.